Call to order, Lake Mills City Council for November 5th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
All who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Corrections and approval of the regular and budget work sessions of the City Council minutes of October 15th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Are there any corrections, additions, or seeing none? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
That takes us to correspondence, number five. Anyone want to share correspondence that they received? Well, I think we all received a letter from the Main Street people and appreciating our support in the budget process, which we will discuss later, but we all received that. Trying to get back to my thing here. Okay, that takes us to item number six, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. Anyone who would like to address the council at this time may come up to the podium. Everybody else is on an agenda item here, so we'll move on. We'll close public comment due to the lack of public comment. Okay. City managers' report, Steve.
You were provided the check registers, so those were attached. Little follow-up on the siren at Brookstone was repaired. We're waiting for the one at the fire department until January. So tomorrow would be a good day to listen because tomorrow is a siren test. So we'll find out if it works or not.
Are they going to try triggering it from the Coney Island?
Yes. That's what happens on the Wednesday. We fixed the part of it and then they triggered it with the hand one that they have, but the only way you can really tell is when the county does it.
That will be the 11 o'clock one?
Yes. South Main Street is under substantial completion. They were cleaning up a few minor punch list items today. I figured they were done, so probably aren't going to see any more action on South Main Street until next spring. Mulberry Street, they were working on punch list items and landscaping. I don't believe that contract will be closed out this year. In fact, I guarantee it isn't because the DNI requires 70% emergent on the grass seed and they're not going to have that. So that contract will stay open over the winter time, but it's under substantial completion now, too. And the punch list was completed. Street maintenance contracts were about done with sidewalks and curb repairs, and there was some patching done, but not all of it. But they're talking about coming back on Saturday because apparently it's going to warm up on Saturday. So we'll see what happens.
I don't think it's going to warm up enough to do that. Doesn't it have to be a certain temperature?
It's supposed to be 40 degrees. And actually asphalt can be done as long as the asphalt hits the right temperature when it's delivered. And if, under certain conditions, if the binder, you have to add another oil mix to it, but...
So that is a possibility.
It is a possibility.
Okay.
Library concrete and paving is done, so if you want to...
How long, when will that open up so that people can drive?
Should be open now.
Really? That fast?
Oh yeah, asphalt you can drive on as soon as it cools, and I'm pretty sure it cooled fast today.
I have a feeling it cooled, yes. Okay, so hooray, we can all drive in one end and out the other now, huh?
Yep.
Do you remember the temperature which, how low can the temperature be for pouring concrete?
It can be 28 degrees without an insulator. And once it hits 28 degrees, and it's like 28 degrees, 12 inches above the ground at, you know, whatever, then you have to do a two mil insulation, and the colder it gets, the more insulation you have to put on. So I know it's, it takes longer than to because it has to hit a certain temperature. The concrete has to heat and, but generally you can continue to pour concrete all winter long as long as you do it, right? Asphalt is the one that you're not going to do.
I was just wondering about Mulberry, some of the sidewalk stuff. And they had put plastic over it, so I assumed it was okay.
Yeah.
It was also for rain. They didn't want water on there, did they?
It could have been for rain or temperature, either one. Most of the ones I've seen recently were temperature-related, but that one had been on there quite a while, so...
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. Our next lead service lateral report will go in the end of December. What this one does is tells them how many we've replaced this year, which is somewhere around 40. So we were doing the radium at well number four, but because of the temperature change, we've requested to delay that until May.
Would you repeat that? What's being delayed?
The radium treatment that we're doing at well number four.
Oh, okay.
Erosion control is still going on. We have submitted our phosphorus compliance report, which was a requirement of our permit, and it basically went through and did a comparison of multiple different methods of gaining phosphorus compliance in the next, at the next permit time, which looked at just paying a fee to the state, adding several different types of structural changes to the wastewater treatment plant, or buying credits from farmers in the region. So that's been submitted. Brookstone Construction and American Way and CP Avenue, all the street and sidewalk construction has been completed. They did a punch list. It's probably done by now, so we might be looking at final acceptance coming up pretty shortly. For the Grenmar subdivision, which is part of your agenda tonight, we prepared the initial developers agreement and looked at working with Eden Hunt to do the TID amendment for that project. Has anyone been out past Horizon? Out there on American Way? They're moving a lot of dirt. The Sandbar inspection was completed today. I don't think we're going to get a good report. Other than that, are there any questions?
When do you think we'll see something from the, shoot, what is it called? The excavations they were doing out there at Sandy Beach?
You mean the archaeological report?
Archaeological stuff, yeah.
That's supposed to be done Thursday. And Rob and Dan and Brandon are meeting with Cheryl to go over it, along with Mr. Watson, the representative from Commonwealth. So I guess we'll have an idea what's going on Friday.
Okay.
If there's anything we need to do, it'll probably be on the next council agenda. If there's anything that comes of that.
Yeah, we'll probably discuss it along with the acceptance documents because I imagine it'll get, it'll get put in the acceptance documents for when we have to accept the grant. So I'm imagining it'll be coming up, maybe not the next meeting, but probably the first one in December at a minimum.
Question on the street projects. Will the street signs that say no parking on this side of the street on the two projects get put up before the, you know? Does both South Main and Mulberry have parking only on one side?
That's the street crews' responsibility to put up on South Main. I think it's the contractor's responsibility on Mulberry. And vaguely is putting them up probably in the next day or two on Mulberry. We had locate calls in, and we did some signage in the last couple of days, but between the snow and trying to get the leaves picked up, we've been... So, but they plan on having them up here in the next week or two.
This stop sign at Lake Park Place on Main Street, is that going to stay there? There's a stop sign from...
No, they're gone.
Okay. It was there the last time I went, which is why I asked. So I didn't go this today. I just wondered, I thought, well, maybe that wouldn't be a bad idea. It's a little on traffic. I guess I got voted out on that. Anybody else have questions for Steve on this report? Well, seeing none, we'll move on. Acceptance of minutes of the joint Rock Lake Committee for September 3rd, 2019 will be accepted and placed on file. Moving to council business, item 9A, miscellaneous licenses. Would you please read that one for us?
We have one tavern operator's license application for Vanessa Rubenbauer.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the tavern operator's license?
So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Item number two, new Class A liquor and Class B A beer license. Would you read that, please?
City Council motion 19-11-1-1, authorizing the granting of Class A liquor and Class A beer license to the Parlour Collective LLC, 807 Elm Street, and appointing Rebecca Walidah's agent.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this? Motion 19-11-1-1.
I'll move adoption of motion 19-11-1-1.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this side?
No, Dan and I had some good conversations about this. And I'm trying to look in here, Dan. Chris Swor, you mentioned it was wine only and not liquor?
I believe that I'd been told that at one point, but their license doesn't dictate that.
So it could be either.
It could be either liquor or wine, under their Class A, Class A as opposed to Class A.
So, no problem.
No, I just had some questions. I was kind of curious about it because it sounds like they're a salon. I was just trying to understand exactly what was going on with it, and Dan gave me some good, some good information, so I'm fine.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Just a sidebar here. Does that mean all of our licenses are out now? No, we still have some?
We still have one, I believe, beer. We also have sentries.
That's true.
That one is still held up there for the Class As. So...
Just was curious. B, WPPI Energy Annual Update. WPPI President and CEO Mike Peters have been gracious enough to come and to speak to us. Do we need to allow them to speak? No, because they're on the agenda. Okay, so it's all yours.
Well, thank you, and thank you for giving me a few minutes on your agenda tonight. The material that I have takes 10, 15 minutes to get through, but please ask whatever questions you might have. I'd like to make sure that I'm responding to the information that the legislature's seeking. The, I'll give you an overview of WPPI Energy, what it means to be a member of WPPI, and some industry issues, a few updates on some issues that we're addressing at WPPI, and then some of the technology initiatives that WPPI is undertaking and to support your local needs as a member of WPPI. So with that, let's talk a little bit about the history of WPPI's organization. We started out with 23 members. We were organized in 1980. Today, we have 51 members in three states. Collectively, our members, including Lake Mills, serve about 200,000 customers. If you had to put that into utility perspective, we are larger than an MG&E. We're about half the size of Alliant or WPS, and then WEPCO is the largest utility in the state. So we're a decent-sized utility when you look at us collectively from a power supply standpoint. We have total assets of about $785 million, so a relatively large organization with a significant budget and assets. We talk and we live every day the aspect of being member-owned and member-governed. Just as you sit here as City Council members making decisions about your community, WPPI's board and our executive committee meet regularly to make decisions about your organization, WPPI. So we have a 51-member board of directors. Steve is your director. Paul is the alternate. And so Lake Bills, along with the other members of WPPI, make the decisions such as what our budget's going to be, what our wholesale rate is going to be. If we're going to issue debt, the board has to approve that debt issuance. If we're going to buy an asset, they have to approve those asset purchases. They have to approve membership issues such as when we extended our member contract a few years ago. That was a board decision to do that. So we, and then we count on that member governance. We have an executive committee made up of 11 members of the board that meets every month. They have, they act on behalf of the board in making policy decisions, taking reports from the staff, and giving us direction on a regular basis. We also have a lot of advisory groups. Paul sits on a member services advisory group. A lot of the programs and services that we offer go through that member advisory group. A lot of the services, most all of the services that we have have come up through an advisory group or member requests for assistance that have led to some aspect of the service, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we get into the presentation.
Can I interrupt for just a minute?
Sure, absolutely, please.
Being involved with the utility for a long time, I was surprised at how, I think it was in the 90s and 2000s, we suddenly grew in membership. What's the potential for further growth or not? Are we plateaued off or what?
Yeah, you saw some significant growth at WPPI up until about the, till the recession. And what happened up until that time is that capacity prices and energy prices, there was a shortage, more or less, or at least not as much of an overcapacity in this market, and so prices were increasing. And so we had an opportunity where it was beneficial to add additional members to WPPI. After the recession and with the change that's happening in the industry, there's been a significant increase in the amount of capacity in this market, which means there's an oversupply to some extent, which has driven down short-term prices. And so when you have short-term prices that are relatively low, you have entities that would otherwise look at WPPI as a potential power supplier, and they would, they'll rather go with a short-term, three- to five-year contract versus what we are, which is an allrequirements, long-term power supplier. So you have to find that balance where it's beneficial for a utility to join us and it's also beneficial to the existing members. We had a few years ago, not that many years ago, we had a co-op in the UP that wanted to join WPPI, and we looked at it, and it actually would have increased our cost collectively to serve them because of their location, so we did not pursue adding them as a member. So you have to find that balance. I would say that we will come back to a point in time where it will make sense for members or utilities who are not members of WPPI to look at us. I think we're a few years away from that right now. There still seems to be low-capacity prices in this market, and short-term contracts are available at a relatively competitive price.
You said the industry is changing. Are you going to get into that or...
Sure, absolutely. I'll talk a little bit about our power supply. That's where I'm heading right now. So, you know, from our standpoint, a couple of things that we look at from a power supply is, you know, cost is always at the forefront of decisions when we're discussing power supply options. Diversity in our fuel supply. Renewable energy has become a very good option for us, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the projects that we've added. And then looking at stability from a price standpoint, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well. So if you want to flip to the next couple of slides, we can go past, actually, it's the one with the picture of the wind farm. So when you talk about power supply, you look at WPPI's portfolio over the last couple of years, and you have a handout in your material, that last sheet that's WPPI Energy at a glance, this sheet here. If you look at that column on the right, you can see the number of resources that we have on our portfolio. We have a significant number for the size of utility that we are, and that's part of our strategy. Just as your retirement portfolio probably doesn't have 100% of your investments in one stock or one investment, we look at our power supply portfolio in the same way. We don't want everything in one power supply unit. We don't want everything in just one fuel source. So we're not 100% coal, 100% nuclear, 100% natural gas. We have a pretty diverse mix. We also have a pretty diverse mix when you look at owned resources versus contract resources. So we have a very diverse portfolio. What that gives us is stability. So if prices in one side, such as natural gas, spike up, other asset generation fuels probably are not. And so it balances out our cost over the long term. If we have a unit goes down, not a single unit represents more than 10% of our generating capacity. So again, a single unit that goes offline isn't going to have as big an impact on our cost as perhaps if you relied on 50% coming out of one generator. That would have an impact on cost. And so with the diversity that we have on our power supply, we're able to withstand changes and fluctuations. We know that competitiveness is critical to our member's success as a community. If you didn't have a low-cost power supplier, if you're a member-owned utility in Lake Mills, you would probably look at other options, but Lake Mills is a great option for you, and we're part of that partnership. This is an example of what we've been doing with our power supply over the last couple of years. We've added two new resources. One came online in June of 2018. It's 132 megawatt wind farm in northern Illinois. The benefit of this is that it reduced our emissions significantly, but at the same time, it reduced our average power supply cost over the long term. And so from a power supply standpoint, that's, you know, that's a win-win from a utility standpoint.
Can I ask you, where is this located?
It's in northern Illinois, about 80 miles west of Rockford, Henry County, Illinois. It's out literally that, in the middle of a cornfield. That is a picture of the actual wind farm itself. It, it's, we were there for the dedication ceremony in June, and it was quite windy and hot. But that's typical for that part of the state, Illinois, northern Illinois, very flat and has pretty good wind resources. So we signed a long-term contract with the developer to take all the output from that farm for the next 20 years.
Now, the question I've got is, with renewable energy like this, wind farm, you're projecting it to be a lower, I assume, lower cost long-term?
Correct.
How, I'm getting, wondering how that compares like to the growth of some of our other production facilities that use natural gas versus, are we still going to involve in coal? What's, I guess, what's the mix?
Yeah, it's a good question. We actually have what our fuel mix is on this sheet. You see that little donut on the left side? We're about 45% coal. We're going to have a coal as a generating resource for a number of years. Our two large coal plants that we have ownership interest in, Boswell in northern Minnesota has a life expectancy out into the late 2030s, and Elm Road has a life expectancy out into the late 2050s. And so all things being as they are today, those plants should run for a number of years. So coal's going to be part of our generating resource, and quite frankly, there are, you need dispatchable resources. You cannot rely today, you cannot rely 100% on wind or 100% on solar. You need resources that you can turn the switch on and run. Coal, natural gas, nuclear runs as a base load fuel. A good example, this last January, when we had that polar vortex and wind chills were minus 40 to minus 50, a significant number of the wind turbines shut down when it got to be negative 20. They're designed to shut off at a certain temperature, that low, because the towers are not built to withstand the stress when they're that cold, and so they shut down. And so you saw the wind generation in this market go from a pretty significant amount just simply disappeared. And if it were not for the coal plants that we own and others own, it would have been, you know, we would have had rolling blackouts or worse. So those coal plants kept the system up. Natural gas, we saw some issues getting those started. Ones that had to turn on, and diesel, again, getting those started. Once they started, they were running, and we kept them running. And so we'll have coal in the mix, natural gas. If you're building any kind of dispatchable resources today, it is natural gas. Right now, we don't have any real needs until the late 20s, '27, '28, '29. We'll start looking at filling those space, that space, probably in the early 2020s. But right now, we're set pretty well for the next 10-plus years. Renewables from a dispatch cost standpoint, that's, the way the system works is everybody bids in their generators, and they'll say what it costs to run those generators, and MISO will run the generators to match the load. They start with the lowest cost and they keep running them until they balance the load. And wind dispatches at zero cost, you know, solar the same. So when those are available, they generate, and other natural gas or coal, depending on where they're at in the dispatch cycle, won't run. But wind, from a cost standpoint, extremely competitive right now. It's about equal to coal or natural gas from a generation standpoint, but you don't get a lot of capacity credit. What that means is it runs when it blows, but other times you have to have something else running. So you get energy out of those plants at certain times, but you don't have, you can't depend on them 24/7.
Are you seeing any kind of increase in the number of days that you can operate a wind farm?
They're becoming larger, so you're getting more generation out of one farm than what you did 10 years ago. That's helping the costs come down significantly. That's really been what's driving the decrease in the cost. Cost in wind farms have dropped about 70% in the last 10 years. That's because the turbines have gotten so much larger. We own a turbine that we bought a little bit more than 10 years ago. It's not... It's not even a megawatt. Now they're building five-megawatt and larger turbines, so.
And the towers?
Yes. The towers are a little bit taller and the, the blade spans are larger and the turbines are bigger. And so they're able to get more generation out of that site than what they could before with older technology, which has helped the prices come down.
Are the blades around, I think, 70 feet or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. Blades are, you'll get over 200 feet of span between the blades. So, yeah, they're significantly larger wind turbines than what you saw just 10 years ago, which helps from an efficiency standpoint. So a turbine, an area that used to only get maybe a 25% capacity factor, now you can get 40, 45, even 50% out of those same areas with these turbines.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Those large turbines that you were just talking about, do they generate quite a bit of sound?
That is, that's an issue that often comes up when you're looking at siting wind farms. They are within, if you're within, you know, 25 to 50 yards of them, you can hear them, whoosh. But beyond that, it's really not much louder than the ambient background noise that you would normally hear, just wind noises. You're not really hearing that, those turbines if you're more than a quarter of a mile away. But that is always an issue when it goes to siting wind farms is, is light flicker. If you're on, you know, if the sun's behind the turbine and you're in front of the turbine, you have a flicker effect. And then wind, the noise. And so most communities, this one included, have siting requirements. Wisconsin has siting requirements. You want a certain setback from people's houses. And so this, you know, this is an area, you can see in that area, there's really not much around that other than corn.
Yeah, it's, it's like comparable to living on the interstate here.
Actually, it probably to some extent, yeah, if you're close enough, it could be, sure.
Thank you.
The other asset that we're going to be bringing online is a solar farm, Point Beach Solar. We did a request for proposals in 2016 and signed a contract with the developer to build 100-megawatt solar farm on the property surrounding the Point Beach Nuclear Plant. This will come online in 2021. Two things from our standpoint. One, it reduces our average cost again, so it's a very good resource from a cost standpoint. And two, it reduces our emissions. And so when you look at us from a utility standpoint, we will have reduced our emissions by almost 37% from what they were in 2005. And so if you look at it from a risk standpoint, we were looking at climate change regulations just a few years ago. If those rules, what went into effect, we were well in, in step to comply with those. So if the political pendulum swings back and we're faced with climate change regulations in the future, we'll be in a good spot in order to accommodate those without seeing a significant increase in cost.
You're talking about solar panels that adjust to the sun?
There'll be roughly 400,000 panels covering about 700 acres of ground around the Point Beach Nuclear Plant. And that, that'll be, actually, they're getting the permits now to build it. They'll start construction next year and it'll be online in 2021. So quite a large solar array. And again, we've signed, NextEra Energy is developing that site for us. They actually own the Point Beach Nuclear Plant as well. And so we get power out of Point Beach Nuclear and then we'll have supply out of, out of this solar farm for 20-plus years.
So with Executive Order 52 that Governor Evers signed, what has that forced your hand to do for preparations for the future as far as Wisconsin complying with the Paris Climate Accord?
Really, it, it, it's not going to affect us in the short term. As I said, we, we really are set pretty well for the next 10 years. 2050 is a long way out. We will only have one asset that could, right now in our portfolio, that could possibly still be running, and that's the Elm Road Generating Station, the coal plant. We don't owe any debt past 2037. So if we had to shut that plant down early, say in 2045 or 2050, it wouldn't have a significant impact on our cost as from a debt standpoint. It'll probably start affecting our power supply decisions in the late 2030s, maybe early 2040s. But over the next 10 years, we'll, we'll continue to do power supply planning the same way we do now, especially when you look at the resources that we've added. Both of them have been renewable, so both of them would have been, you know, exactly what you would have expected with the objective of having zero emissions by 2050. All the utilities, you know, are, are going in the same direction. It's just how we get there and how quickly we get there will be the issue. From our standpoint, cost is really important. And we're going to make decisions like this that both reduce emissions and, and at least stabilize costs. If you go to that next bar card, that bar chart on the next page, you can see that our average power costs have actually declined going back from 2014 and are projected to remain relatively flat. We're about 10% lower today than we were in 2017. Matter of fact, that 2019 price, right now, we're about 3% to 4% below that for 2019. That's actually an older chart. We're running at about $70 a megawatt hour. So you have to go back to 2009 to see where our prices were equal to where they're at today. Going out over the next three to four years, our prices are not projected to increase more than 1.5% to 2% over that four- or five-year period total. Not each year, but over that four- to five-year period. So relatively flat for the foreseeable future from a power supply standpoint. Any questions on, I've got a few, if you have any others on power supply?
We're just full of it.
What's that?
We're just full of questions.
That's good. No, I enjoy answering questions. Let's talk about services. You know, the, we talk a lot about utilities of the future, but really it's utilities of today. All of you, I'm sure, have bought something on Amazon or read a Kindle or look at your bank statements online or your cell phone bill. I mean, we interact with vendors all the time using technology. We send emails or get text alerts. That's how customers today, from all generations, expect to deal with their vendors. Sure, we still have customers that want to walk in and write a check to pay their utility bill, but you also have a lot of customers who simply want to see their usage online, pay their bill online, don't want to really interact any more than that with the utility company. So we have to have technology in place that allows you to provide that to your customers. And that's really what a utility of the future is all about. It's being able to meet customer expectations, whether it's that customer that wants to walk in the door and write the check or the customer that wants to interact completely online and do everything digitally. And we have the systems in place to allow customers to do that. And Lake Mills is at the forefront when we're looking at technology offerings for your customers. So, you know, when WPPI was created for power supply, services were not that far behind. We, we came together for the economies of scale for power supply, but those same economies of scale apply for services as well. There's an example on page 11 of a list of services that have been developed just over the last few years in order to meet our members' expectations and your customers' needs. And Lake Mills is taking advantage of a number of these services. For example, shared meter technicians. As you've moved into, excuse me, AMI. As we moved into AMI technology, the, the metering requirements have gotten more complicated. And so what WPPI has done to assist our members is we, we have trained meter technicians. That's all they do. The, the basic residential metering that your utilities are involved with, most likely your alignment are taking care of those needs. The more sophisticated metering problems that might come up, you might rely on WPPI's experts in metering to come and assist you. So that's a service that we put together and Lake Mills is taking advantage of that. Billing and tariff compliance, that's another issue. As you've got into the, the AMI technology with the North Star billing system, customers' loads can change every month. And it's your obligation to make sure your customers are on the right tariff, the right rate. But customers' load can change. And if you're not looking at that every month, you could have a customer on the wrong rate. That's actually considered a billing error and you would have to go back and make corrections. We put together a service now, and Lake Mills is using that too, that we look at your, we run a report every month. We verify that your customers are on the right tariffs. If we flag customers that might be questionable, then your staff can easily look at those individual customers without looking at the thousands of customers that you serve. You can just identify, we identify the ones that might be questionable and you can take a look at that. And so that frees up your staff to do higher-quality customer service work versus running reports and validating billing and tariff rules. And so that's another thing that WPPI staff has done. And then we've really stepped up our training for that North Star billing system so that your staff becomes more proficient in meeting your customers' needs and expectations. The last area that WPPI spends time on is advocacy. I don't have to go into a lot of detail. I'm sure you, you know the importance of being involved with state and federal officials on rules and legislation that affects the communities that we all live and serve in. You know, Paul's been active with us on those fronts, whether it's going to Madison to talk to state reps or going with us to Washington DC to sit down with our representatives in DC. Every year, tax exempt financing is on the, on the, on the block and we've had to defend that for a number of years. An issue that we're talking with Congress right now about is renewable tax credits, where investor-owned companies can develop a renewable resource and get tax credits for doing that. We are not allowed, we can't do that because we're tax exempt. But we're looking at ways and Congress is in discussions with our national representatives, APPA, on how we could get similar incentives so that we could own renewable resources directly instead of doing them through contracts, which could lower the cost. So again, being involved on the government relations front is important to WPPI. We were created because of legislation that passed in 1970, in the late 70s. If that legislation hadn't passed, WPPI wouldn't have come into being. So being part of the legislative process is part of our existence and we're very actively engaged and that will continue to be there because it's important to our customers and to you as members. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have. But again, I appreciate the time you've given me, but, and I also appreciate the questions and the partnership that we've had with Lake Mills.
One question I've got is, what's the effect of some of the new transmission lines they're talking about building or are in the process of?
We're supportive of those transmission lines for, from a number of reasons. One, it, we're, we're an owner of ATC, so we have benefit and value in the ownership aspects of those lines. Second, it does open up more markets for us. It opens up access to lower-cost renewable energy in Iowa and in the Dakotas and Minnesota. You know, frankly, Wisconsin's not a bad resource from a wind standpoint, but there are better resources. And with transmission, we can get that lower-cost energy into Wisconsin from. So from that standpoint, we've been very supportive of the development of those lines. Transmission is about 15% of our bill to you. And so transmission is a part of our cost structure. And it has gone up over the last 10 to 15 years, but it needed to. If you look back at the transmission system that was in this part of the country back in the 90s, we had a lot of problems. And that's since been addressed and will continue to have a very robust transmission system, very reliable system, that's going to give us access to low-cost renewable energy that we can import from other states that might have a better wind resource or better solar mix. Again, thank you always if you have any questions or issues.
Oh, one other question.
Oh, sure.
What does the future look like as far as, from our standpoint, as far as the industry has been in a change and flux and laws have changed? Is there anything on the horizon that you see that could potentially change something?
I, I think over the next 10 years to 15 years, we're not going to see significant change. I think after you get out 10, 15, 20 years, I mean, my crystal ball probably gets as fuzzy as anybody's else's. But I think when rooftop solar and battery technology is cheaper than your distribution services or, or power supply services, then I think that can change relationships that you have with the customer. I don't think you go away. I don't think it changes what you all do. Because I think even if you do have rooftop solar and battery, you're still going to be connected to a distribution system. I think our portfolio changes over time. We become more renewable, less, less coal, less natural gas. And I think it's a combination of customers with rooftop solar and a battery and then relying on us for the other times that they need generation and always relying on you to be that connection to them as a customer. You know, there's a lot of talk about exchanging where customers are a very robust engagement with the utility where they're selling their excess and then buying when they need. And, and that could come about, but I think we're a long way away from doing that. It won't, Paul and I will be long retired when that's an issue. But, I think so. But I think for the next 10 to 15 years, I don't see anything drastic. After that, I think you can start to see integration of more batteries and more solar and the challenges that'll bring to both the power supply side and the distribution side. But we're a little ways away from that.
There aren't any inventions waiting to?
I don't know of any perpetual motion machines or, you know, black boxes where you put your banana peels in and get, you know, power supply out of. I, I don't know of anything on the horizon that would be disruptive like that. Solar and battery are the two technologies that are most often talked about today as being disruptive to the industry. And those are still a number of years away before customers are going to, you know, disconnect from you and put in solar and battery on their houses and go that direction.
There's one question on security, cyber attack.
Absolutely. We have stepped up what we do in the area of cyber over the last five to seven years. We have installed these, you know, basically state-of-the-art hardware and software. We have the same type of technology that any large investor-owned utility would have or transmission provider would have. We've added a full-time, we have two actual full-time network engineers that operate our system pretty much 24/7. So we've built a layer of protection within our system from, all the way from employee training, all the way through to the hardware and software that a utility should have. We've also developed a service for our members that if they want to have the same type of security that we have, we extend that to our member communities. We have six or seven on that service now. We have a couple, excuse me, a couple more that look at it each year. But the best dollar you can spend is employee training. If there's been any issues with member communities, it's been employees, you know, clicking on something they shouldn't click on or using an infected laptop and getting malware into the system that way. That's probably the biggest vulnerability of any utility is the employees and so training is your best line of defense. After that, it's the systems, it's the hardware, the software, and then setting up the system so that if somebody does get into the system, they can't do very much damage. So it's something that we look at literally 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
The other question I've got deals with damage done by solar winds, flares.
Yeah.
Highly charged particles.
Yeah.
Like we had in Quebec a number of years ago.
Yep.
Shutting the system down.
Yeah, actually Senator Ron Johnson, that's the, one of his top issues with utilities is EMPs and GMDs. And both EPRI, the Electric Power Research Institute, released a report last year. They studied those very issues and looked at the vulnerabilities of the transmission systems. And they found that we're not as in bad a shape as what maybe was thought at the time. There's probably some areas that we can improve. But the transmission systems, they, you know, they have a lightning arrestor lines going across the top. They've done a lot to improve those systems so that they're not as vulnerable to solar flares. When you get into the EMPs, the electromagnetic pulses, which basically is a nuclear weapon that gets detonated above, you know, say Milwaukee or something, that's a Department of Defense issue. If that's happening, we got bigger problems than, you know, than what I, as a utility executive, is going to be addressing. But that being said, utilities are looking at how could they respond? And so one area is having, knowing where the vulnerabilities of the system are and mostly it's in the transformers, these really big transformers that might take, you know, six months to a year to build. Finding out where those are located and then having sharing arrangements so that if there's an issue in one part of the country, another part of the country could ship a transformer and get it there in a matter of days as opposed to six months or a year. So there's a lot of talk amongst the transmission utilities on how we can share resources.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
You bet. Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it.
All right. That moves us to item 9C, Resolution 1950, the utilities budget approval. Would you? Would you read the resolution title?
Resolution 19-50, Resolution Declaring Official 2020 Utilities Budget.
Is it the pleasure of the council to have it read further? You can do whatever.
I move adoption of Resolution 1950.
Second.
Any further discussion?
It just looks like we're, we're going to be a little in the red on the water utility.
Which we knew was coming.
Yep.
And that's, that's also the reason that we're going to be delaying some projects next year. Lake Street being one of them that we had hoped to do next year, but because of the water utility not being able to support the work being done on Lake Street, we're going to have to delay that a year. Is there any other street that's being delayed because of that, Steve?
Well, Reed Street is potentially being delayed, likely is being delayed. And so, every project we have is, is running on that. So, it depends on, you know, what the construction costs are at the time as to how fast we can continue to move forward and, you know, what the revenue changes are based on the, on the rates and, and the water use, so.
Lake and Reed?
Yes, they're the two that are, are most likely to be delayed.
I know, I, I told some people that Lake Street would be done next year because that's what the plan was originally. It'll be delayed a year because of not having enough money in the water utility to do the underground work on those streets. So, sorry, but gotta have the money to do the work, so. My apologies on that. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And do we have any other questions before we roll? Seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Thank you. Takes us to D, Ordinance 1207. Would you please, with this as the third reading? And, let's see, and that means that we can do that by title only, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, please do that.
Ordinance 1207, in ordinance annexing territory of the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. Parcel identification number 01807132423003.
This is the third reading, as I already stated, so I need a motion.
I move adoption of Ordinance 1207.
Second.
And is there any further discussion on this ordinance? This is for the land south of town.
Along Mud Lake Road?
Mud Lake Road. Discussed it prior to tonight. If you have questions and you have access to a computer, you can look at this in detail on the website for the city under the agenda. And is there anything other, other site or it would be just that, right?
Yeah.
So, if you want to look at that closer. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Okay, moves us to item number 9D, which is the public hearing for the 2020 general budget. We will now open the public hearing for the general budget. Anyone who would like to speak to it may come up to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. And we will move on to item F, which is Ordinance 2008A. Would you read that title, please?
Ordinance 1208A, 2020 General Government Budget and Tax Levy Ordinance.
And I need a motion on this one.
I move adoption of Ordinance 20, I mean, Ordinance 1208A.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion, questions, comments? We have had numerous work sessions on this that have been open to the public. The budget is again online under the city website for the agenda. Nothing other than, we can go on, huh? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Thank you. Items G is the public hearing for the 2020 capital budget is now open. If anyone would like to speak regarding the 2020 capital budget, you may come up to the podium at this time. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. And we will move on to item 9H, Ordinance 2009B. Would you read that, please?
Ordinance 1209B, 2020 Capital Budget.
Short and sweet here. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions or comments, changes, whatever? Again, if you're interested in what this is more detailed on this item, please go to the website for the city and you can see the whole capital budget there. And nothing else, call the roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
Okay, so we're all set for 2020. Well, that takes us to item number 10, Recommendations for Future Agendas. Anything that somebody has that you'd like to put on the next agenda? Okay, nothing at this time?
We do have, the sheriff finally sent out that 911 agreement that we normally see from them, so that'll be on the agenda. We may, we're looking at recommending a fee schedule.
Or?
We might see those two items. Well, I know we'll see the one on the agenda, the other one we might see. Was there one other item we discussed today that might be on the agenda?
Sandbar potentially.
Oh, yeah, the sandbar.
Okay.
What was the fee schedule about?
It's trying to set up so that we have all our fees in one schedule. And we list in the ordinances, instead of having fees in everywhere in the ordinance, we just list by fee schedule. We did some of that earlier, I remember, but there's still some areas where it could use some cleanup.
Makes it easier for you.
It makes it easier for people too, to find what the fees are because they're all in one place. So, that's something we'll be looking at. And obviously, there can be other agenda items that will be brought up and watch your computer and your, see what's going on in the city. Number 11, convene to closed session, would you read that, please?
Convene into closed session pursuant to Stat 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction.
Need a motion to move into closed session?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass 5-0.
So, we are moving into closed session. We will not reconvene on cable or in here, we will just do that after our closed session. So, meeting moved into closed session.